What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching and study session. Today we're gonna be doing big blind defense at deep stack against early positions. Oh, is that how it's gonna start?
Uh huh.
Well, it's easy. Is it?
You ever provide the the one hitter clicker here?
No.
Versus big sizing and no backdoor flush draw. I don't like it.
Yeah, I like calling. Definitely call.
If we had a club, I'd be down to click.
So is there a world where this was folding?
Uh, yeah.
I I think there is a world. I don't think we live in it quite yet, but I I I think there is a world.
We have, we have so many more hands to defend against this size. This might fold.
I I I just can never fold this on a texture like this. There's too many cards that the equity just swings on the turn with. That you can probably just take this part away.
Um, well, how many?
Okay. Or eight.
The deck?
Deuce.
Any high card?
I mean, high cards are no bueno.
He's already polarizing here. Like, I don't, I don't like that.
I would, my, my first idea was to fold that I'm like trying to talk to myself into a call because it's a pair. Can't hold a pair to one bet.
But you got it over. We're a hundred bigs deep, boys.
We don't have flush interaction. What are you gonna do?
Yeah, we have some major reverse implied odds here. Like, what card is good for us?
You really wanna hit the five?
Five, a queen.
Against this polarized range, you wanna draw to five outs?
I mean, that's actually pretty, that's a pretty good assessment. Alright, I mean, he has all the sets, right?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Nice score maneuver. Move, move us coop.
Mavic.
Mavic.
That that means it's not bad.
Oh, that's why it's in red, liar.
Not good, but it's not that.
Alright, let's study that spot.
Oh, look at his hand, bud.
Every five is going.
Alright, look at the, let's look for the one hitter clickers. Little nine, three suited, a little eight, three suited. What are these crazies doing? The eight, four?
The fours, man.
Eight, four.
A four. Well, that, that's a flop straight.
Isn't it? Oh, wait, is it? Sorry, it is a straight. Ignore.
But nine, four.
The heuristic is like all the, like on this rainbow board, it's all the straight blockers. So all the fours and all the eights.
Alright, ten, eight. Ten, eight suited. About the, about the eights?
Yeah.
So is there a size is gonna go for or we're gonna fold to? I guess not. This is his biggest size, right?
I couldn't imagine him going bigger on a three liner. On the flop that's like out of his range. Maybe he does sometimes. Not really, not really.
Yeah, like you, you look at this range, like, got a lot of pretty big hands here. And our raise frequency is so low, right? Like, it's only.
Yeah, yeah, you shouldn't be raising too much for set sizing. You are definitely right about that.
Yeah, when you do, it's all the, the straight blockers with probably backdoor flushes.
Yeah, you got like two pairs and straights stuff.
You can't fold a pair. You gotta call some nine X. With the backdoor flush. Seven, six, five.
Yeah, it's folding ace five off, right? It's, it is starting to find some folds with fives, but mostly calling there. Right, folding twos and threes.
Oh, look at this, a bad blocker here.
Yeah.
We bet's big. And we're not allowed to fold anything. And then, do we think people are gonna bet as often at this or?
No, I, I, yeah, I think this is a bit of a fairy tale personally. I don't fi- think people are finding large sizing on this texture. At twenty seven percent, you know, one in four shots.
Right, but do they check as much as this?
If I check more, man, I would think, at least I do. I'm basing it off my objective opinion because that's how I play it.
Okay, okay, but do you think people are checking a lot with queens?
Hmm, probably not.
No, I think they're, I think they're going polar with a lot of their larger size hands.
It's probably a lot less queen nine. Um, betting and a lot more pocket queens.
Yeah, that's, that's how I thought of it.
Yeah, the, the value portion of what a, a population bets here is gonna be reflective of the value portions on this page. But they are gonna be missing the buffs here. It's just gonna be really hard for them.
Yeah, I believe that makes sense, Pete. I'm a definitely on board with that assessment.
Sets of five, six, and sevens, eights, right? Or pocket eights, eight, seven, all of that's gonna find big bets.
So big bet on the low connected texture, you can't fold any pair, you can't fold. And is it true at lower side depth, like at forty?
Uh, that's a good question, Louis. I would be more inclined to fold if we were facing a large bet at, let, let's say forty big blinds.
It's sixty because forty is not gonna blast that much.
Yeah, good, good assessment, probably sixty then. Let's look what the fives are doing then.
Forty. Not folding.
Wow.
Just folding threes and twos still.
It's hard, it's hard to make a pair, guys. Hard to make a pair.
The fives are calling still here.
So I thought two things when I saw that hand that made me, led me to a wrong decision. First one was we're against CP.
Mm hmm.
Second was the bet sides. And? What happened here?
Looks like a three bet pot.
Yo.
Okay. So here and now, two things happen, right? So in three bet pots, we're supposed to be betting very often. But we learned that in three bet pots as the aggressor, like, when there's a flush draw out there, you wanna base your betting strategy a lot on the flush. Now we miss the flush. This is where we check it up. Am I wrong?
Check a lot, check a lot, twelve a little.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely checking here.
Jake, it's a raging, it's a bet.
Yeah, check or twelve, right? The, the idea is polar here. You, you need fold equity. Can't price them in with a single spade.
Forty percent checking, sixty percent betting. But we still bet more often than not. Have a quick look at the report. We like the table. And then we like, we see, let's see what we check the most monotone, flush draw, connected, connected, connected.
Yeah, meddling connected monotone boards are just like, uh.
Right, these are all scary, right?
Mm hmm.
So, okay, connect the middle, fifty percent checking.
Yeah, it looks like low connected, middling connected, coordinated fleshy boards are just.
So these are almost all either monotone or flush draw, right? And then there's not a single rainbow board. No, this is.
There may be, there, there's like one or two, but it's, they're.
Yeah.
They're different, right?
Pair of ace.
Ten, ten, nine, four rainbow, ten, seven, four rainbow. Was in there. Ace is low.
So, wait, wait, wait. In general, we're checking thirty percent of the time only, so seventy percent betting still. Alright, so we should be better.
Look at that seventy-five percent bet. It's pretty, uh.
Or the.
This is a four bet pot?
Danny, what have you done?
Alright, so wait, you three bet, he four bet. This is a four bet call, so you're playing call. Maybe you just pile here.
Jeez.
You do just pile, kind of.
Pile on his best.
So we call and then this comes.
Need donk blast it.
As they're calling?
Yeah, that's what it did.
No, 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 I didn't see the solution yet.
Yeah, I thought we did. I don't know, man, this is not bad. This is, uh. You picked up equity, whatever, what are you gonna do?
Okay. So we called up four bet, man.
Uh, yeah, I don't know how many donk.
Quarter of your stack is in, I mean.
You got sets here, he doesn't.
He is probably not very, he's never, probably not very polarizer.
I would say you having ace king here is not, or you having an ace here isn't great because you're blocking. His ace kings. So maybe not with this combo.
It's probably just gonna have a lot of other big pairs then, right? Like.
Yeah, he's not gonna fold kings and queens, right?
No. But he might not raise if you lead small.
Leading doesn't feel crazy here at all. It feels completely reasonable to lead here, especially when you make it to this flop with an eight in your hand.
You know, as a caller in a four bet path, if you're talking about leading, I think nothing is reasonable.
Alright, maybe this is a better check raise than a lead.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, welcome to the lead bar.
What are you gonna do here? Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah, the, the goal of leading is to, is to make him not polarize.
Yeah.
Also, look at the ace range. It's like, really, a solver did it like two, 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 one.
Yeah, I don't know why it's, uh, choosing to take this lead strategy with queens or jacks. Feels kinda strange.
It's trying to get the money in before the turn gets worse.
Yeah, maybe that's what it is.
I don't like this hand at all. Let's call.
Easy call. Printing, five chips.
What the hell is going on with the mission?
Now it's, now it's.
Abort, abort mission.
Should've punted on the flop.
Look at this, man. Somebody's like.
Yeah, you would have been better off punting on the flop for sure.
I can imagine it's not about somebody, but it's another team like us.
They're, they're as, they're as confused right now.
What is this? Why are we in a tree where it's always a, we call a format?
You gotta go back to the thing and just isolate SRP, I think. Cause you have MTT solutions. Yeah, right there, SRP. Not the variety blend.
Did you see leaves there on the floor?
Uh, was there? I didn't pay attention.
Nine high.
Yeah, pretty, uh, pretty prominent response, actually.
So this here says we only do it two percent of the time, but. Okay, so it gets thin really quick. Okay, I see, I see. We do it a lot on six, five, four rainbow. Eight, seven, six rainbow. That's funny. And then, and even a nine high pair board. Have you ever considered that? Leading from the big blind on nine high pair board. Funny. Well, I'm learning every day. So why would you wanna leave here with this hand? I don't get it.
You're unblocking his ace and king X.
Huh?
You got five si- you got five, six, you got fives, you got sixes, you got some nines, you got seven, eights. He has some of that, but not all of it. You got nine, five suited, you got nine, six suited. I mean, it's not a bad board for the big blind.
As it is now, we fold to a big bet, do we fold to a small bet?
Mm hmm, I'd probably want back, backdoor flush.
I think we put too much pressure on the way he crumbled.
Click.
I.
Or wait, do you even click or do you just go massive here? Actually, like, are we just going to like sixteen? I kinda like going to sixteen.
You know, you only have one pair and then this guy could easily have kings, right?
Yeah, but it's, but it's top, top. He also, he also has.
Forty big blinds here, man.
If you have check raises in your range, I feel like. This would be it. I don't know.
That's a big bet.
I think it's primarily just a big bet because of sizing, right? Like from, or stacked up rather?
Well, that's part of it, but the texture also jack high two tone. This is gonna be a more contested. Uh, board, defending from the big blind, so. He's gonna be a more polar construction here. Gonna have checks and bigger bets. As opposed to just condensing it all down to a little baby bet.
I'm not like. I'm not adverse to, to clicking or raising. Uh, but I think in, on this board, uh, we don't really, I mean, like, we're afraid, I mean, we're not really like afraid of much here. I mean, if he has kings or queens, so, so be it. Uh, we have the ace of, we have the ace of spades, so we're blocking a lot of the flush draws, so. I mean, the only things he really can have are top pairs, possibly sets. We have more sets than he does. We have more flush draws than, than he does. Um, but we have, I mean, we have a jack pair. I mean, we're not going anywhere, but I, I don't know if we wanna play for heaps with, uh, just a, a pair of jack, you know? I mean, he's got a lot of like king, jack, he's got a, uh, so that we beat. Um, he could also have like jack ten, I guess. Um, suited.
But Greg, he showed up on your front porch disrespectfully throwing a big bet at your pot. And you're, you're, you're just gonna.
I'm sorry, we're a big, big blind.
We're, we're big.
What is this? Who knows?
You're all, you're gonna let him disrespect you on your own lawn like this?
I think so. I think, I think I'm going to. And then when he, when he comes a little further, I'll blast him, but.
I'm going purple.
Okay, well, I seem to have something here.
You're like playing it's a forty big blind game at a hundred.
Maybe purple's not really a thing.
Purple is a thing apparently with two pair.
With your, your little pair. Cause you gotta hunt those behind you. And this guy, you know what? Look at him, he just has queens. Or kings. Oh, okay, this is a scam, right? But we don't know who is getting scammed here. That's what I see. He could have king, jack, or he could have queens. It's not up to us, right?
I, this part is the part where I'm very, I'm a little bit more afraid.
I am afraid.
I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm calling, but I, I'm, I'm not happy about it.
Easy call.
I think I'm happy here.
You are?
Very happy.
Okay.
Cause we didn't need to check raise and now the chips are going in and now I know that I'm good.
Now, yes, now you are good.
So, problem is. Okay, the mesh, okay, so against a machine that says it's gonna work out, right? But I don't think we can make it. We can check here. Cause I think people that they's king, he's queen here. They're supposed to be betting. You know, more some frequency and I've, against me, they find a lot of checks when I check it. But now it's cross, but I just like to open shows.
Ah, yeah. What are you getting called by if you open shove?
His king? No.
Why would you not check if he's got ace king?
I think like against population, I get, I like that. But against him, I assume he has enough ten value better. So I think against him, it's a perfect spot to check. Think it's gonna be pure. But against population, I think population checks back, doesn't bet for ten value after then enough here. And then they call too much.
Yeah, I think against population, holding the ace of spades is super bad here because you want them to have an ace high flush that you're cooling with two pair. Right? They're like, oh, I missed my flush draw, but I made top pair. I'm just gonna bet it anyways.
So we still have some leads there.
Hmm, maybe you could, I don't know. I would play check with a hand this strong.
We don't have much like, no, we don't actually. Cause you need four, five, seven, it's a three card thing.
Yeah, pure check.
I would just call that.
This, nice call here.
So.
Yeah.
Top set, all middle set, we mix.
I think verse one point five, I'm basically calling my entire range here.
Let him blast off with jacks.
What about trees? You can't call with trees here for sure.
Bro, it's one point five.
It, it's trees. Bottom set, you know, you can wanna get fancy with top set, middle set. Okay. Bottom trees will never call here.
We probably are raising trees almost. No. They're calling.
And he is calling, but then if you look at six, majority calling and then eight pure. We're not raising.
Eight, six, okay, I can get behind piling money in with eight, six. You, you're strong, but you're vulnerable.
Two percent. When I see this, I don't say raising range. Am I wrong?
It doesn't look like that.
He's just not raising.
Oh, wait, you're looking at seven, five, yeah, well, you, you're just saying the whole.
We're not raising much here.
Well, yeah, it's because he bet one point five X.
Yeah, against that sizing, you're okay to pretty much pure call.
It's wildly polar. It's like, if he ever has a bluff, you definitely wanna give him the rope to keep going. And then if he has value, he's gonna give it to you anyways. Feel like the ace is kind of bad. It can definitely be an action kill. Alright, I'm gonna, he checked. I'm gonna go do something absolutely silly here at this point.
Two point five.
Two point five? Oh, man, you're letting like pocket nines just get away with murder here if you bet two, two point five chips.
That's how you induce with your best hand, right?
I don't like it at all. I would bet big, I think. The texture, the texture's kinda goofy.
When he bets in and then he shuts down on an ace, it's like either like. A very like, it's probably pocket nine, right?
Hmm.
Nine, stands, jacks, queens, that don't, that are just not gonna put any more money in it.
But are we really calling our ace highs? On the flop to one point five?
Uh, well, you would have two pairs, Arnie. So I think like ace six with a backdoor flush, ace eight.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
Maybe eight, three, I don't know, maybe he's three folds.
Yeah, I guess we, we are pretty, pretty nutted when we're calling that.
And two, like the targeting the, uh, the bluff raises. I just don't know how many bluff raises this texture really lends itself to. Like, um, what would make a good bluff raise versus small bet here? From under the gun one at a hundred.
Uh, it's gonna be straight infraction based cards, right? So like when he has ninety-seven, right? And stuff like that.
But there's no straights that have made it is my only issue, I guess. Is why I would be apprehensive about it on this texture.
I, I think that like, if you bet twenty, I think it's really hard to get called by pocket nines.
Well, I think the ace kinda screwed us regardless. I feel like. Alright, so you gotta kinda construct what you're targeting to get paid from. And with this discontinuous action, really polar check. I feel like he's got good bluff catchers here, perhaps, and like. Not such good bluffs, if that makes sense.
No, I don't think he has great buffs.
Um, oh, yeah, he doesn't have great blows, but I think he has reasonable bluff catchers still left in this range.
Alright. Okay, let's put down the ax. I think it's gonna be a sixty percent.
Why not even purple? Twenty point five, baby.
You're not gonna get called by.
Maybe, maybe I'm being greedy. Maybe you're right.
Wha- what is queens always gonna call? Just to figure out if you're, if you got it or no.
Queens?
Eight, right, or fourteen?
It's well.
Fourteen by four, right?
I, I, I'm pretty sure the, I'm pretty sure the queens would call the, the fourteen, but like, uh, in a frequency, but I'm. Almost a hundred percent sure that they'd be calling at eight point five, right? Like, it's too, it's too good of a price for even the lower end, like the lower ends of the hands to be able to call the river. Like, you're, you're, you're getting, um, I mean, you have a quarter there, like essentially betting, or thirty-five percent there. Betting, so like, when you pot, when, when you put that in, it's too good of a price to be able to call, to be able to, to see the river.
Let's see, it makes sense. It's a nice little bet here.
I'm sticking by purple.
It likes to.
It does do two point five.
Welcome to your block, man. Woo, woo.
Yeah.
There is on the heater.
So does it, so does it want to check because it wants to induce a bluff? No, right?
I think it, it's got to. Why, there's no other reason it would check a, a house. Yeah, see like boom, he's got nines and I feel like we just get nothing, whereas if you go absolutely bananas, you might get called. I don't know. It's, 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 it's weird to me. The solver does weird things at a hundred big blinds. I feel like it plays overly nitty. Maybe there's something there.
Yeah, I think the idea is the only way that you're gonna get all the chips in is getting a check raise there, or else you're only ever gonna get. Twenty chips or fourteen chips.
Maybe that's what that is, maybe. That's not crazy. It may just be looking for the, uh, the home run, you know? Too big of a bet to raise. You do, you definitely call.
Uh, ombo draw, really? You wanna call?
Well, you can make a nuts, right? You can make a king, you can make a spade. And then if you make the nuts, you get good reverse implied odds, right?
It, it folds. That's pretty, uh.
Folds to the overbet, yeah. Probably this deep, right? The re- the reverse implied odds, right?
Well, we didn't call on the sideboard against this guy, right? So I guess. And he overbets too. Anyone notice he overbet? Cause I didn't.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
Didn't see it.
We just have a straight draw and a flush draw was the only reason I was thinking like. I'm not folding, but. I'm not folding, but.
How many houses are we running into though, right?
Zero if the board's not paired.
I mean, that's what I mean. Like, I, I don't know why the, I, I, I can't really understand. I mean, I, I guess it's the overbet. I don't understand.
Tell me something, Ray. How does the big blind defend on pair board?
Yeah, that's probably some of it.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I'll be quiet now.
Right, it's a question.
No, no, no. Don't be quiet. Don't be quiet.
On pair board, the big line defend mostly by?
Uh, by calling or raising?
No, no, you can't say both answers.
It's one or the other. Uh, so it's, uh, it's by raising, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and you don't wanna raise that board.
Why not? Is it not paired? Are we not from the big one?
Oh, oh, this is, oh, sorry. I thought we were talking about the last one.
Connect the dots, Greg, come on.
I, I'm, uh, my coffee's still working. So, I mean, we're gonna be, we're gonna be raising good.
This is a pretty quality probe spot in my mind.
Is it? You wanna do it on a six?
You got your block, your double blocking combos of eight X that villain could have. He could have some ten eight, some nine eight. And then also you pick up like paper thin equity. It just feels like a good one.
Can I, can I overbet here?
Uh, you might, maybe, maybe. I don't know if you need to.
I don't, I don't think I need to, but I was wondering if they are overbets here.
Well, looks like.
That pot.
There you go. Yep.
Yeah, only overbets.
Okay.
That's one twenty-five, yeah.
Why you wanna?
Well, because, because we have blockers, uh, to the, we have bluffs for the straight. Um, like blockers to the, to the straight rather, uh, we have, I mean, which doesn't really connect with this range. Um, I don't know, I.
I'd say, I'm guessing here, Greg, but I think over bad because we have a bunch of eight in our range. I wanna.
Yeah.
Bro, it's just the only size they use. It's like the only size they have right now, so.
It's a red or red, right? So it's. It's big or very, very vague. Two hundred percent pot. That's rare, right?
Yeah, especially we're blocking two combo, combos of that he's gonna have nines, right? Then he'll be opening ten nine and nine eight that he'd be opening.
Yeah, we're blocking these eights with our ten nine.
And then we have. A pretty big nut advantage here.
Okay, so you can go like two hundred percent. Geez.
Likes the check though.
Wow.
Wow.
Two eggs pop.
Yeah, man, give him the business. Win with that ten high.
Kind of shenanigans is this?
Yeah, part of it too. We also had the magic combination of ten nine, the one that blocks the unflopped suited eights. Right? Cause it was ten of spades, nine of clubs.
Oh.
Oh, I didn't even think about that.
I didn't even think about that either. That's a good call.
Yeah, it's, it's the maximum effect blocker.
I think, I think we, we're calling.
Easy, easy call.
Okay.
Unless you're betting twenty-one.
Oh, a little break here.
Computer's tired.
Let's take a rest. Alright. Let's check. Oh, now it's playing very fast.
I'm letting go, I think.
You, you're holding every ten?
Uh, yeah.
What's a good ten? What's a bad ten?
Maybe one with overs would be a continue, cause you're blocking.
Which one is better? Ace ten or ten nine?
I think ace ten's gonna be better. Queen ten's not bad, cause you are blocking, uh, pocket queens, but he could still easily have aces and kings here.
So ace is a good blocker here, cause you block maybe the straight, maybe a five, maybe a jack. Is that it?
I, I think so.
Okay, ace might be tough because like it's also gonna block the wheels, right? Which are gonna be the ones that are trying to get better races to hold here.
Well, first off, let's draw a line. Do we fault, do we call anything worse than a ten here? Like a five, a three, or like a bucket seven? Probably not, right?
No.
Well, this is gonna fold a lot and then the tens, do we call every ten? No, probably not, right?
We probably don't want a queen in our hand, right? Cause.
Do we call every jack? Like if you have it here, like a jack four.
I don't think you get to fold jacks still.
No, I don't think we do.
Maybe like, maybe jack four suited, maybe jack four suited is completely indifferent, maybe.
You're gonna give this guys, like, is there a limit? Well, how much are you gonna lose with jack four here? Just asking for the river.
So, I'm not paying a jam, I'm not paying a jam.
You're not paying a jam, okay? Are you paying like a forty big blend on the river?
Why not?
So I guess this is, this escape, we, we either, if we, if we call here, then we sort of almost have to call on most brick rivers. As well too, probably a big bet. So do we wanna? Risk our stack, right? That's the question right here on the turn, right?
I don't know why he's betting so big too. So Jack ten, it's bored, so he, I know he's polar, but.
Yeah.
Seems like he has a king or a queen.
He definitely could have ace king or ace queen.
Well, having the ace might not be as good as we thought it was.
Yeah, the bottom line on a rainbow board this deep, you're gonna have the, the straight becomes the default for his bluffs. So having a queen here is maybe not so good, cause we wanna unblock king, queen and queen nine. But also having an ace is bad here because you wanna unblock ace deuce and ace four.
Well, both would be bad.
Let's click the button and look at the range.
Woo.
So I think like ten, seven is gonna be probably what we want a lot. And an eight.
So queen ten is better than ace ten.
Look at the tens, they're getting smashed.
Yes, look at it. Ten nine, ten eight, ten seven, let's go. Unblock both ends of the straight.
Yeah, but queen ten doesn't, right? That's like, okay, I get that now.
Yeah, so queen ten is, having a queen is bad here and having an ace is really bad here, cause it blocks both. It blocks both ends of the straight where you want him to be blocking.
Dogs the top of the street.
And the bottom with the wheel.
The bottom is what you wanna have, no?
No, the, the ace, like you want, you wanna unblock ace deuce. Right? You wanna have a middling card here? You don't wanna have a card at the bottom and you don't wanna have a card at the top and the ace is both.
Yeah.
Cause I wasn't the impression that. He's betting a lot with the upper part of the straight. So if you have it, you block his bluffs.
Hmm.
Take a look at his range. I bet he's betting all his wheels here too, all his wheel draws.
I feel like.
Draws are intuitive, I think.
I feel like this is a very thin part of the range and we don't care much. Look at ten loose. I mean, it's mixing, but. It's not like ace ten.
It's not like ace ten.
So like the wheel, not convinced to have that big of an impact. See?
Yeah, just betting ace three, ace six.
But it's betting every time has king, queen.
Yep.
King queen makes a lot of sense.
So you don't wanna call with a king or a queen in your hand. You wanna call with ten nine, cause you have, you don't, is he betting nine X like eight, nine? See bingo, he's not betting eight, nine. So you're unblocking, when you have ten nine. He's betting the upper part of the straight, so you wanna call with the bottom part of the straight.
Oh, yeah.
Huh?
Yep, yep, it's good.
So queen is bad, cause he's betting king, queen. Then we didn't look at the jacks. I didn't. With you guys?
No.
I was kinda focused on the.
I think we'd probably be calling most of our jacks.
Yeah, jacks are more resilient, but queen jack is the worst one.
Yeah.
Jack nine.
Yeah.
Bottom man.
Yeah.
So easy fold with the back blocker queen.
Pocket aces.
Oh, look at this. Thing check?
Yeah. Apple. Ooh.
Uh, against the small size, holding a state.
Greg.
Just sir.
How does the big line defend on pair boards?
We raise.
We defend mostly by?
Raising.
Hmm. Do you think it applies here?
Um, yeah, probably. I think.
The deuce is a bit of a.
Uh, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a stretch for sure, because, because of the deuces, cause we don't really have many. The, the only reason why I would consider raising is cause we do have a spade in our hand.
Yeah, so there's like sixteen, eight, almost twenty percent raise, thirty percent call, so it calls more. But if it was like a, a higher pair, you'd see more and more raising.
Um, could we see the, uh, delineation between what ten, or what pair, um, what it's doing with tens?
First off, let's look at forty big blinds, okay? At forty big blinds, it raises even more, alright? So now we're raising twenty-five percent, calling thirty-three percent. Okay, and then. Go back to a hundred. Let's make this seven, five, five. See, on a seven, five, five, sixteen, nineteen, that's twenty, that's twenty-eight. So twenty-eight percent raising, twenty percent calling. So make it seven, four, four. Things, like the big man has K cards, okay? Whenever it hits between the four and the seven. Sometimes even the eight, these are really, really, really great cards for the big blind. So, I didn't look at pocket jacks. Or pocket ten. You can check raise if you want, majority call. Oh.
No leads here, right?
On a seven.
Maybe on a six.
I don't know.
Yeah, we probably definitely have a lead on a six.
Five or a six.
Five, six.
Or a four.
Maybe even an ace. We probably lead on an ace.
Let's see.
No.
Yeah, we got all the five, four in range.
No leads here.
We're not gonna lead an ace though. There's no way.
I bet you we have some leads at sixty at a hundred big blinds, if an ace comes in on the, on that, on that turn.
Alright, Arnie, I'll give you eight percent leads on an ace.
We, we've got sixteen combos of five, four? I guess we might check rate. I don't know if we're gonna check. We probably would check raise five, four on that flop. So yeah, you're probably right.
So. These are the cards we can lead on the turn. Simple as that. A three, some eights. A four, or five, or a six. That's it. Everything else is a check. So, three, if the board pairs, a four, the straight, immediate straight card, immediate straight card. Then a six is a bit, four, five, it's a bit of a stretch, right? But it hits with the seven. But that's what you can leave. So, check, he bets over bet, I'm happy. So, now. Now, I think. Roger, are you here? And this is a spot where like we're against early position where Ed's up, he bets pretty big. Do we think he has many deuce in his hand?
Nope.
Probably not that many, cause he opens EP. Does he open his deuce? No? Does he open?
Yeah.
No?
I think so.
Hundred big line, number again, he doesn't open ace deuce.
He's under the gun one.
The one? Is the one doing it?
Yeah, I think so.
So there, my best lever, but there's not much, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Two combos.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we raise?
No.
It's still too good to raise. I want to, but I don't think we are.
To, like, uh, uh, it would be like a polarization error to raise, right?
I don't think so. We're not high enough and we're not, it's not low enough.
Raising versus a range which will be bluffs and better over pairs is quite dangerous. I guess there's nines and eights.
Louis, let me ask you, if we didn't raise flop, why would you wanna raise now?
Because. I see myself raising the flop a lot, but we, we didn't do it, right?
Do you wanna play for stacks?
Call though.
Is this not good enough to raise? In my mind, it is. No overbear, low board. Uh, what's gonna be a good river? Nothing, basically. So we call and then we face a tough decision, right? Whereas now, in my mind, it's very likely we have the best hand.
We, we just keep our opponent wide. Remember, there's gonna be some bad rivers for our opponent too. Our opponent's gonna check back sometimes.
In my mind, most of the river are bad for us. Any high card above a ten is bad and his spade is bad. He, he can put pressure on us.
I think, uh, if we're shallower, I think if we're at forty right here, I think we just close our eyes and click call twice.
Could be.
Yep.
It doesn't really matter what the river is.
Could be.
Yep.
Alright, that's.
Bad as it gets.
A pretty bad one. That's a pretty bad one. Bet spot.
Well, 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 well.
Yeah, I'm sticking with the plan.
Tell you what, uh, uh, we have a ten of spade, right?
That's true. We could be up against ace king here, right?
Close your eyes and click it. There you go.
Good boy. Show the friggin' king, queen with the king of spades.
Oh my god, that'd be disgusting.
He's ten pulling without the speed.
Could be king, jack, um.
Pretty close.
Queen, jack, I mean, it's, it's, I mean.
Yeah.
Is, there's not many, is there? Ace, jack?
But what's gonna be gross is if he shows you queen, jack off.
Oh, yeah, that's what, that's what, uh, oh, Jesus.
Louis, do you wanna look at the turn after this and see if any of the, if the tens without a spade were ever raising? I still think they won't, but.
Um, could we look at the under the guns range for what he would be betting the size with?
On the turn, it's gonna be a lot of stuff.
No, I meant on the, I meant on the river. Just wanted to see.
This is very reminiscent of the hand that I played yesterday.
Betting one, one third of his river range this size, so.
Okay. Yeah, he's got a ton of things.
Yep.
And they all make a lot of sense.
Well, part of it is he just has sevens plus a lock, right? Like he has aces, kings, queens, jacks, tens, nines, eight, sevens are all in this value range.
What's that? Pocket eights was bluffing?
Oh my goodness, look at this.
Just has it every time.
Yeah, we lost the minimum.
Just like my opponents.
Just like my opponents, they have it every time.
I check, okay, I, I check back eights, uh.
And just show aces.
You gotta go for that thin value, baby.
Oh, let's take a rest. Reflect.
We have, do we ever don't with the ace back, bad kicker here?
I think the, the three pairing is not so bad.
Yeah, but, I mean, it's the low jack versus big blinds. We have less freeze than if it is first late position.
Alright, alright, it's a three. If, if it was a four, we would do it, always, every time.
I, I mean, I think with this one, you kinda just wanna check, but, yeah.
But if it was a four bearing, we would do it every time, always.
We'll just bet range, yeah, for one third.
Yeah.
Just, uh, do we, do we check hook and let him bluff, or do we go for value?
I think we.
It's like a four point five. Yeah.
Seems bad.
Like four point five.
Seems bad.
So your plan is to bet fold then?
Yeah. We're gonna block that. No, we have a weak top pair, so when you have.
I think.
Top pair, like that's small.
I think block bet's good.
It was check, check, both streets, it was check, check, where it's. I think we have too much value to.
Bet two, you know?
You bet two with a seven.
Well, no, with the name, a weak ace.
Didn't it go check call for that?
Yeah, we're, it's too good. No, flop was check, check, turn was check, check.
See, he's checking now, checking to induce.
Or value bet.
Forty percent, alright, chop it up, man.
Scammed.
Either has aces or the same hand, you're, stop trying to win against this guy, right? On my five board. Okay, so he's, he's gonna check a lot.
I mean, he shouldn't have many nines.
Okay, so he doesn't.
He shouldn't have many nines here.
What kind of size are we gonna raise to?
He has tons of single big spades. Yeah, you, you don't.
I think we're just calling here, I don't know if we wanna raise with the three flush.
Are you a bunch of nits? We gotta raise sometimes.
No spade.
I think it's raising sometimes.
It looks like we have a spade when we raise.
If, if you raise, you're accidentally gonna wind up at a hundred big blind pot with bid there. It's gonna be a disaster.
No, we, we're gonna check the turn a lot, no?
We're just like, uh, it's politics here, we're just like raising to see if he wants to really or not.
I'm gonna be surprised if we raise here.
Oh my goodness.
We can get, we can.
Thanks. It, you're only gonna raise sets and single big spades here.
Alright.
Peter, the deep stack Jedi.
Take a look at the range, that's, that's my guess, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but.
I'm raising some nines here.
Sets, did you say sets?
Yeah, sets and single big spade.
Who even plays deep stack poker?
We barely even get a raise here, look at this.
So, we got our single big spade.
Sets of nine, sets of seven, sets of threes.
We just call every flush, huh?
Um, like ace deuce, ace four, that block, that unblock the other big spades for him to call with, can also do it.
So not raising many nines.
Bottom pair, bottom pairs raising, look at that, eight free, six free. Five free.
I'm definitely not just calling like queen five of spades here often enough, though.
Louis, do, do you find the eight free or diamonds? That's the question.
Eight, three of diamonds. I will.
We know Louis finds it.
You know what, Lewis? I wanted to raise my top pairs, but from now on, I will raise all of my, my bottom pairs and call it the Lewis race.
I mean, the bottom pairs, you can get more to fold.
And if it, if it works, you're gonna be a genius, and if it fails, well.
When you. You have to know how to play the turn. If you're gonna.
Now, when you raise the bottom pair, you're mimicking like you flopped a set, and so you're gonna continue when the board pairs. Right, with like a. A set strategy.
I mean, this is just a fucking awful turn.
That was a yucky turn for sure. Not a fan.
Are we allowed to just fold, right?
Yeah, check, check fold, I think, sounds good.
I have a pair, we can't fold.
Oh. God, that's a bad river, check fold.
I don't think it's a bad river, I think it's a river, keep, with it, full of opportunities.
Doesn't the, doesn't the ace? Play here.
It's time to turn that nine into a bluff.
We're hoping that we get our five chips back here. When we check a six or what?
Two, or, or six, or something. He has, have a spade to call.
Wouldn't we prefer to turn a seven into a bluff, because it's lower down in our range?
I don't think there's much of a difference.
Okay.
I think, boss, I don't know if the solver is doing it, but if you.
But, but because.
Great exploit.
Because with king nine, like, if he's got like eights, like, he can check back eights and he can win, but if he got a seven, we're just gonna lose.
Chop, bro.
Oh, it's a chop, oh, yeah.
It's a weird spot, like, I don't know how we pick which hands to bluff with, but yeah, six is good here.
Well, probably almost entire range, because he should be betting turn if he has a spade. You think?
Well.
When it completes.
Unless it's like.
Just trying to scam him. Right, just trying to figure out if he has a spade to call or not, which means if he doesn't have a spade, we win seventy-five percent of the time. So that's my reasoning behind.
Yeah, that, that is true, it's gonna, it's gonna get through a lot, right?
Yeah, we just get, get away with it a lot. My mind's an exploit, but the, the machine is doing it, you know?
Two and a half, it's like a little too small, he might call the chop sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can you look at our.
Do that, and he can only call with a spade. Not surprising. I'm just reasoning, you know, so.
I mean, I, I, I'd label this guy a fishing game, cool, I'd, I'd label him a station if, if he was in my game.
I'd label him the worst.
Wow.
Oh.
Okay. So.
Bad board for us, we should overfold on this board. Especially against a nine chip there. Nice.
Especially with nine high.
Check fold.
Louis, I woke up today. I, 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 you know, I, I, I opened my GG. You know, I go on poker craft. Minus a hundred percent ROI. All my horses broke their legs.
Oh my goodness, Lewis. All of your horses broke their legs. You know, you gotta be severe with horses that.
Who are you staking?
Louis and Jedi, they, they let me down.
What? What game did you stake me in, Lewis?
I stayed to your mobile games and even, I even had, you know, share liquidity, this guy fired another bullet, still didn't cash.
He didn't buy my late night action, Louis, we, uh, we took third last night.
Peter, I know, I know you're the biggest winner in this chat, man.
Only on yesterday, ever, a lot of other days, other people win big.
You know, next time, I'm, I, I'll stake, I'll stake Peter, like, it's gonna.
Alright, hear me out. Hear me out, hear me out, is this ever? Just a fold?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ninety-nine, put seven percent of the time.
Cause you're on the bottom.
Cause an eight could be dirty, right?
And that's exactly right.
And clubs are the worst one.
It's a big bet as well.
What do we do with six, seven of diamonds, though?
Probably continue with the backdoor flush actually.
Why are you looking for these little thin things? There's nothing here.
That's the point of studying, man. We have a gutter.
I mean, this is a. Nine, so I'd, I'd free bet this pre anyway, deep stacked.
It looks like. We don't know what's going on.
Looks like you're trying to.
TV when we turn an eight. And he doesn't have queen ten.
We appreciate your patience. This serves as a security protection.
Air gaming.
You know, I really hate that, because. I'm not gonna say it, am I gonna say it?
No, don't say it.
I'm not gonna say it.
Seventy-six suited, the only one that folds is the club.
Alright, cool.
You just don't have enough equity. But it's gonna check fold, but I think it's gonna check raise if it was any of the other suits. It was any of the other suits.
Well, I'll have the, the, the.
Yeah.
Direction, oh, it's so small.
I don't know if it matters.
No, 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 this is.
Still take it.
Wow, really?
Yeah. Cause here we have a drought of the nuts.
Yeah, now.
Yeah, against a strong range.
He bet small on flop, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do we don't care?
Oh, we have to.
I prefer check raise.
No, 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 six is pretty good, I think. On the next sideboard, against a nerd again, maybe it's not ideal.
Yeah, we're also, we're gonna wanna block the top end, we're probably gonna, we might be leading if we have a seven or a nine here.
The EV is very similar.
Oh, he checks back, come on.
We have to block.
So ready to make it twenty-eight in his face, man.
This is a, this is a really good river, like he'd continue with his spade hands, most like, like, maybe not king, queen suited, but a lot of them. Like, I think we have to bet maybe like. Uh, the, the question is sizing, do we go six or thirteen? I think quite big's quite nice. Lewis, one, one. We wanna, we wanna bet a size where he's like folding out, maybe.
Or do we go thirty?
Can you get king eye to fold?
Certainly.
Yeah, of course. Peter, thirteen or thirty?
If we get king eye to fold, this is an amazing bet to take.
Can we get, can we get ace, uh, can we get an ace to fold, if we bet thirteen?
What?
An ace.
Does an ace ever fold if we overbet?
No, we're not in the business of trying to get aces to fold here.
What ace is, an ace.
If he folds queen eye, I'm very happy. If he folds king eye, I'm very happy, that's all I'm looking for.
But we're gonna bet big with our flush, no?
That's all I'm looking for.
All the sizings.
Queen eye.
Yeah.
Look at that. Thirty, very well represented, I just wanna say.
So we went, what, six?
With the nut low.
So, if, if I have four, three offsuit here, with the four of spades or three of spades, I like the bigger sizing more often. Without a spade in our hand, I like the smaller sizing.
I fold four, three offsuit three, I think, it's.
But if he has a. If he were to have a spade flush draw with a four or a three in it, don't you think he would barrel the turn quite often?
No, it's just us, it's just blocking him having spades. Right, just blocking him having any two spades.
I still think, if, if he had like, queen four of spades, he's just always gonna bet turn.
Is this no lock to small bets? This is a very polarizing board, I would have thought he would have bet big on this board mostly.
I have a seven, Lewis, we're gonna have to check raise.
Yeah, yeah, uh, I would, every time.
I don't know.
Yeah, too small, too small, you know, it's deep stacked, Louis.
Deep, yeah, dry board.
Oh my god.
He, it looks like he really wanted us to check raise them.
But does he really have aces?
Do you not peel this?
You would never do that with one pair.
No, stack, stacked pot ratio is getting too reduced and we're backdoor drawing, we have lots of better continues here.
I think he's too bad, he's full of.
I mean, we're bluffing, so we fold up.
Peel every gutter.
Yeah, like. We're still gonna hang around here with like ace four, ace five.
Why is there none enough?
What about seven, eight? Seven, eight of, uh, hearts.
That's, that's. That's a, you need, you're drawing to a draw, right? You need immediate.
Yeah, but my draw draw is a better, I have a better draw draw with seven, eight.
It's very simple.
Thirty-eight, thirty big blind here, twenty-eight.
It's very simple, we, we were bluffing and we got, we got found out, the guy, the guy knew we had a bluff combo.
We caught, we got caught speeding.
He knew we had too many bloods, see, he just got, he just got the nuts.
Alright, get out. Right?
Check, check call versus. Oh wow, we got to be. We got to, surely.
Oh no.
We got a dog.
This is so gross, you don't have.
I.
Now, we're gonna bet range.
Struggle to construct a range in this spot.
Yeah, range, range bet for, for two chips.
Range bet for two chips. I don't know about that.
We have so many more eights than him.
Okay, let's try it.
I don't know.
Wow.
Thing is, the ace is pretty good usually, but.
So the nine-eight connection is gonna be very good for like, a lot of, a lot of the parts of our range, so he is gonna check back some aces here.
I'm okay with folding here.
Yeah. This is just.
I'm okay with folding, uh, no harm to foul.
I, I guess, I guess if it was a flush draw board, we get to bet more, because we have all the flush draws, right?
Yeah. And, and we're gonna have slightly more connected hands that gets continue better there. And we're also gonna have a ton of aces and eights and nines, so.
I would really love it if the, the sport didn't smash his range, but.
Nah, check, check fold, I, I.
Yeah, it's pretty.
Yeah, even against small bet, I think.
Yeah, I don't think we can call this ever.
Ace king board's pretty bad. For big blind.
Against Louis, play check. Play check back with a good hand and.
Danny, you, you never played against me, you, you never played against me.
Yeah, but I'm learning from the sash right now, just gonna.
You, you don't have to do anything, I'll just punt into you out of pure ego.
Oh, this guy has no leads, I raise.
What?
Alright, um, another small bet on a.
Yeah, just, just.
A big bet.
Just fold, we have, we have queen jack high.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no equity.
No, I was, I was. I wasn't talking about this, and I was being Louis.
Airdrop.
What about the bear drop?
Airdrop, hundred big blinds deep, you wanna make medium pair, get it fixed.
Is it, is this no locked to thirty-three percent bets?
Nope.
Then, well, why are all these, why are there all these small betting on these, 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 like, bad boards, like the low card boards?
Lewis, the machine is self-aware. Alright, if the side.
Show the ranch here, so Louis can see.
Is it gonna go for?
I don't think this is a big bet board.
Maybe it's the seven and eight high ones, I don't know. Well, no big betting.
Alright, plenty of big betting, fifteen percent of the time. Still a majority bet small, right?
What if it's like eight, five deuce?
Yeah, it has to be more disconnected.
See, now you're overbetting.
Yeah.
Still majority bet small. Alright, so you have to think, whenever you got the big bets in there, it's still gonna be a majority bet small.
Yeah, the, the bottom line is like, on the flop. The early position player just wants to push equity against our really wide range. Right, so it's just gonna be really frequent betting and not always big.
I think we just have to cool.
Is there, why would you call? King and a board against EP?
Wh-what, I, oh, all right, so I, I legitimately wanna know, well, like, cause I, I, maybe. Maybe I'm missing this, but I don't think I'm ever calling this, this spot, why are we calling?
We blocked ace king, well, Louis got it over, not all of this one.
The implied odds when we hit a flush.
And we've got a backdoor flush.
It's a big bet, so we don't get to raise much, right?
Yeah. I can, I can get behind a little bit of call here, I would prefer to call with, um, some straight interaction.
Right.
So ace eight of spades is a better call, and ace nine of spades is a better call, but ace six is probably gonna make it in there.
I, I agree, Peter, I think we're gonna fold here, and we're gonna call ace eight and ace nine.
I think, I think I'm fo- I'm like a hundred percent folding this spot. I don't know about Ace eight or Ace nine as well. I don't know if I'm actually calling.
Does ever bluff raise Ace eight and Ace nine?
No.
No? We got no announced.
We're, we're not gonna raise much here. It's a big bet.
I don't think we're gonna raise with an ace.
Whoa.
Sorry.
I am surprised. Ace eight and Ace nine, all the backdoors folding.
Yeah, that's kinda how I was looking at it. I don't.
So quick trick. Whenever we're playing against EP. King Eye and Ace I board, we overfold.
Can you change it to a small bet and see how the range changes?
Oh, wow. Ace eight's still folding, Ace seven's calling, Ace six is folding.
Ace nine starts to creep in, but still not quite good enough.
What was the MDF? Anyone got some quick mathematics?
Oh, like sixty-seven percent here, seventy percent?
And it's cooling sixty percent because you wanna overfold out because it, oh, it's cooling forty percent. That's quite a big, that's a quite a big overload.
Yeah, it's folding forty-five.
Oh, yeah, because I forgot the raises. Yes, and it's supposed to defend seventy.
It's a small battle.
Just interacts with.
You're supposed to defend like against a two here, thirty-two percent. You're supposed to defend eighty percent, eh, eighty percent of range, right?
Yeah.
And we are over folding by twenty-five percent.
It's pretty wild. Yeah, we're gonna get punished on on a ton of runouts, right? On this kind of board.
Yeah, well, it's just Ace I and King I flops, like we do that on.
Web connected.
Check call.
Easy check call.
That's a very bad.
King's bad, check.
Yeah.
Check.
That can pray he doesn't polarize.
Yeah, he bets nine, uh.
We're, we're gonna wanna be polarized on this turn, right? Betting Kings and spades mostly, and then like Jack eight.
Yeah, I don't even know about spades.
I think it's, I think it's because it's a bad card for us. We wanna be very polar.
Not even Kings, like two pair probably.
Wow, this is so bad. This might be a fold.
I think it's a fold, yeah. No, 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 no.
Wow.
I mean, it's, it's the best turn card for him, right? So you wanna overfold, I assume. And it's a big bet.
Is it better than an ace?
Um, I mean, they're probably, they're probably pretty similar in terms of uh. Uh, how EV shifts. What happened to?
Comes, the flush hits, you got this, babe. What are we doing here?
That big.
Ah.
I was gonna say, yeah, like we can get King High to fold. We can get like sevens to fold, eights to fold by the river. Just like, make it a two-street game. I mean, uh, I mean, this. I mean, he doesn't have many sixes, but neither do I, do we.
Sure we do. We have lots of sixes.
I think after, after big bet turn, though.
I think we check.
Hold on.
We've six, nine, six.
Come on, you're on speed mode today.
Listen, no, 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 no. We bet the turn. Have less pay.
Yeah.
Six pair. We need to be convincing here.
Yeah, I mean, this makes sense.
Twelve thinking it was enough. It's just not enough.
I I mean. I mean, I was saying we're gonna get, we can get eights to fold, sevens to fold by the river, but on this, when it pairs, that that's not folded anymore, right? Cause it's. It's pretty high up in range. Like, this is just, this is, this is just a bad river. This is a bad river.
No, no, it's a great river. You're in the big blind, the six pair. It's amazing.
And then why is it checking Queen High if it's such a good?
No, it's overbetting some, but it is.
Not, it's betting twenty-five, one hundred, overbet.
I mean, it was checking eighty percent.
You close your eyes and you overbet.
It's such a good river we're checking. It's such a good river we're checking Queen High.
What's he gonna do?
Yeah, going four to nine. Yeah, we had to get, we have to bet big. I've never folded a nine, though.
To one fifty?
I will make you fold your nine easily.
So Louis, check if it's, if if we check the river, is it check raising with this combo?
Of course it is, B. You know it.
I know it does, right? Like, that's part of the element of checking here, too.
Wait, I don't know about that.
The queen of spades is definitely gonna have some check rate. Well, maybe the king, yes.
You might be right.
Like, six is represented in our range. We block the flush, like.
I wouldn't think to do it with this hand.
Why not?
Nope. Not so much.
Maybe if you bet small.
We don't have the best blockers for it.
This guy shouldn't bet much on the river. The flush came in, the six came.
Maybe I'm a little enthusiastic with my spade here.
What are we even doing it? Oh, nine, three is the bluff, huh?
Well, no, that's, that's a full house.
Uh, no, no, the six was paired. So nine, three is the counterfeited two pair.
Counterfeited.
Which I found that bluff the other day and it worked. Those are nice.
It's the nine and the eight high flops you you bet big mainly, right? Peter?
Um, for him, he's gonna have, um, he's gonna have some big bets at all, all kind of things. But this is gonna be one that wants it, right?
Yeah. I mean, you you have more big bets on nine high and eight high boards than like six high, seven high, right?
You're desperately looking for a bit bats, so I got to go.
It's a flush draw board. You won't have as many, but it's still there, because, yeah.
Big bets. Here we go.
Two broadways.
Ace, Jack, ten, flirt. Ace Jack ten seems to be very.
Do do the a hundred percent on the six chips. Yeah, the nine high. Nine high, ten high.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So connected middling boards.
Yeah.
So nine, eight with a flush draw, ten eights with a flush draw. Right? All of that type of stuff.
Cause the other, the other big bets are just because you have a massive range advantage. You wanna bet big with your value, I mean, a not advantage. Well, here it's like. Eh, we don't have that good, good connection. So you wanna be polarized.
Yeah, on on these boards.
It's protecting the top bears or the equities.
Now do the one fifty sizing.
I mean, it's not gonna be used that much. Oh, it is, actually. I said with a nine high boards and ten highs.
Same ones, but rainbow.
Yeah, yeah. Nine, nine, ten, eight. Yeah, because the seven and the six high boards is just not that good for your opponent, so you can bet store a lot.
I think part of the idea on like these nine-eight boards is the under the guns range is going to contain all the cards that are above it. So you're gonna have two overs, you're gonna have straight draws, you're gonna have all this type of stuff. The big blind's range is still going to interact in that same way, but it's also gonna have all the ignorant end of the straights. So when the board is nine, eight, the big blind has seven, six and seven, five and six, five. That it's gonna stick in there with, whereas under the gun is gonna have the top end of it, right? Ten Jack, Jack, Queen, Queen, King. As, uh, so there's gonna be spots where the straight comes in and under the gun's tight top end range. Is never gonna be put in a bad spot, whereas the big blind is often gonna have to. Bluff catch with the ignorant end of the straight. Like this board. How how happy would you be if you were in the big blind with fifty-six here?
Pretty happy.
Alright.
But but not, not if he bets two-thirds and overbets the turn. Raise a ten-four, no backdoor flush.
I go with the seven point, oh, seven.
I think we raise, don't we? Or do we call those clubs? I think we.
And why you wanna raise that size?
What do, what do you wanna raise?
I think we just wanna call here, no?
I thought we.
We have ten high. That we're open-ended.
We're, we're open-ended.
Yeah, the backdoor flush.
If you. If you raise this hand, you're gonna get your end open.
Let's see.
Probably this deep stack with no backdoor flush would probably, oh, actually, yeah. Does wanna raise a little bit.
Just call a lot.
I wanna call like every ten with an overcard, easy call. Every ten with a pair, easy call. Ten six is a made straight, and then I wanna like raise ten, five and below a little bit.
Hmm. Giving us lots of time to think about checking.
A lot of our lead here?
Usually not.
Oh, gross.
We can see how it constructs the lead.
Oh, boy. Are we getting housed here?
No, no.
I don't think, I think we're betting here.
I'm pretty sure we're betting. Yeah, I don't think there's ever a spot where he isn't there.
Yeah, that's hard, too.
Yeah.
You can't bet two here, because you're, you're too strong. I think you would bet two with like, maybe Ace Jack.
Maybe with a pair blocker.
Would you? If you go bigger, it's hard to get called because it's a four liner on a paired board, but.
So it sums up to like, how do you structure your range after that turn goes check, check? Very often, it's almost always the same. Top pair, top kicker and better is betting big. By big, I mean like this. Weak top pairs are betting small like this. Second pair usually betting small, anything like. Anything else betting small and then everything else is just checking in general. Little two?
Why is he betting so small on this board? Call. I think we're gonna call the small sizing.
Okay.
He's, he's got lots of hands that uh, that can bet small. Like, he's, he's probably betting range here. Right? So he's in here betting with seventy-six and pocket fours, so.
And here comes the bomb, and then we're in the spot.
Yep.
What are you gonna do?
When he bets thirteen, I guess I'm letting it go. I don't, I don't really know.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Just double barrel, close my eyes, double barrel, and then.
And then I fold everything, I I guess, yeah.
Yeah.